Okay, all right, if you need this, you got this.
All right, I think I'm ready to go.
All right.
And the video.
So I sent it to Todd. What about removing this, maybe replace it later? Oh, yeah, I was on that. Yeah, I went to that today. Uh huh. Oh, like, uh, yes. Oh. Oh, yeah. So. That's.
Okay.
Yeah. I was, I had, I had. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Feel about. You know, my friend. No, it's like, when it's great, it's taken.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. There you go. Um, but, yeah. Okay.
Yes.
She's been with me. This is very special.
More.
She do.
Thank you.
Your.
This is here.
Hi.
For you too.
No, I just.
This year.
Yes.
Try not to. Just appear. Yes. I mean, necessary for us to. I would like some appreciation.
Only one.
Yes.
So.
That's ridiculous. I have six acres. I have it with me. I didn't know. But she was. Yeah. They're, they're. We're. All right. Really. Right. Oh, totally good idea to close them. Yeah, I think we're ready. Hey, Ruby, hi, good to see you. We dropped off. Hi. Oh, that's right. All right, we're ready. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at seven oh one. Thank you all for being here, this is such an exciting.
Better, right.
Um, we are going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Like it's a cheer. Kay, give my.
My pledge is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
We are going to start off, and we know that there's lots going on in high school, so we want to try to get the kids front and center and then so they can go on to your concert and other things. So we start with our Gritz Greenhouse Project and community volunteers.
Okay. So my name is Todd Morris, this is Deanne Zachary, and we run the Gritz program, uh, growing relationships in the soil, and that's what we do, we build a community through meaningful work. Uh, one of our main projects, of course, out there through farm management is, uh, a really large garden, where we grow pumpkins, uh, uh, corn and beans, kind of the three sisters idea of growing. And what we have realized over the years is that in order to get serious about teaching the kids about gardening and maybe even some transferable skills is we needed to have a, like a professional greenhouse. Uh, that's gonna allow us to start seeds, have a more robust plant sale at May Day, and, uh, and get our crops started. We have some critters out there that if we plant seeds, they dig them all up, they eat them, and so, and then, so we made some greenhouses, uh, from some arrow kits a few years back, but they're not really sealed up real well, and they get in there, no matter how much we try to do it, so. Um, so we realized we needed a professional greenhouse, so, um, we went through the process of getting one approved and purchased, and then it was a matter, I took a look at the plans and they're like, this is, you know, I, I consider myself kinda handy, but this was above my pay grade, so. We looked around for some folks to help out, a lot of, a lot of the maintenance, uh, started the project for us, I think that's what, right here at the beginning, a lot of the maintenance crew, um, he just filed through because I don't have a specific thing for you. Um, and, and then Rick Christensen, uh, he said, you know what, I, I've been building forever, so, he said, I, I'll come out and do that, I wanna work with the kids, he really wanted to teach the kids a lot of his work ethic and a lot of the, the, uh, tricks to the trade. Uh, he recruited Neil Kerr and, and his buddy Tom Bobas was able to come out a couple times, and, uh, and so they really started getting after it, so they got our kids going and whatever parts of it they could do, um, uh, they would do, we sorted things out. Here's a group of, uh, this is probably early on, here's Rick and, and some of the, and, uh, uh, Jumper and, and some of the other folks that we have that were helping out. Um, they came out and kinda got after it, and, and then they leave a little bit of work for our kids to do, and we kinda plug away at it until they get back out again. Uh, Rick's got a really busy schedule, he's all over the world, and so, uh, he comes out and does a flurry of work and, and then we kinda do a little bit until he gets back, and so we're about, we're getting near the end there, the kid's working on it here. Oh, we had a couple of these two right here, Brett and Kayden, they really owned it, they were like, okay, we're gonna, they took on most of the responsibility. So, um, what we have now, and then getting the roof panels on was the hardest part, um, and so that's where, uh, that took a little while to get that figured out, and, uh, once that was on, now they're throwing up the sides and they'll be, it'll be ready to go one hundred percent for us next year. Um, we're getting, uh, you know, fan system, we have water, they have, uh, they ran electricity in there, we got donated, uh, I can't remember exactly what the amount was, it was a pretty high amount from O-Hop, uh, that, that hooked us up. So we got power, water, and even phone cable if we needed out there, so someday if we need it for something, so it's really gonna be, yeah, here's a good picture of what it kinda, where it, just about where it is right now. Um, it's gonna be, um, kind of our hub of activities, it'll be a nice dry space, uh, somewhat sealed dry space, so we can keep some things in there that need to stay nice, and so it's really gonna be a, an all-purpose situation, but we're gonna be able to do a lot of, a lot of plant, planting that we haven't been able to do. So Rick and Neil and, uh, Tom and, and several people from the maintenance crew, um, have done a, a bunch of work out there that I just couldn't figure out, so I've been really, am happy with them, the kids have been excited to, to work with him, and, and he's got all kinds of, um, worldly advice for them, so when it comes to work ethic and construction, and, and so it's been a, it's been a really cool deal, and we're really excited about just the huge amount of improvement in our planting we're gonna be able to do with this, with this greenhouse next year. And I think out of all the stuff we do, this is gonna be something that we're gonna work on to, to have those transferable skills, because there's a lot of greenhouse, uh, operations in the area, I wanna try to meet with them and have them come out and consult with us about skills and some things that they would like kids to know, so they could come out of this program and like go to work in one of the professional greenhouse, greenhouses in the area, so it's really gonna help us with that transferable skill piece, so. Um, yeah, it's just been a really great, um, project, and I've been really, really thankful after looking at those plans for Rick and Neil and Tom to come out and figure it out for me, because I've, this is, it was, like I said, it was up here, so, um, I really appreciate everything they've done. Need to add, Deanne?
I think that picture, if we go back one, that's today on the last.
Oh, yeah.
Fourteen students that are previous Gritz students that came out for the traditional reunion, um, so they field checked out and came out from the high school group, every single one of those students over the past three years, because three of them are seniors that came out today, have helped form the pad, run the gravel, build the walls, have done all that, and they joined us today to see what the progress is, was behind, so.
Deanne, I set up a little table back there with pictures and some, some testimonials from the kids, and, uh, so if you have a chance later to check those out, that one. Sorry, take, yeah, over there in that table.
Okay.
I'm supposed to take questions?
Also, Todd, just, uh, as a way of, uh, appreciation, we actually do have some certificates of appreciation to Tom and Rick and Neil, uh, reading, uh, recognition of your valuable contribution and dedicated service as a volunteer on the Gritz farm. Your time, effort, and teamwork have played a vital role in promoting sustainability, education, and environmental awareness within our community, and, uh, we'll go ahead and get these out, but.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we, uh, noted that, uh, the work that you led and that, um, supported by these, these great volunteers has now added to something that will pass, be passed on from generation to generation and, and promote to farming.
Absolutely.
Beautiful thing.
One thing I learned about Rick in particular is that he's not one for attention, so.
No.
I knew it would be a struggle, he's out of town anyway now, but I knew it would be a struggle in a big way.
They're vibrant, but be Rick. Might just have to go find.
All right, we could, we could probably take him down next time we see him.
Yeah, that would be great, it would be easy for the students to give up.
Yeah. And for the kids, yeah. Yeah, we'll do that.
That would be great, you know, that would be really nice.
All right.
Do any of, does anybody have any questions on the board, uh, for sports around the Gritz program? How many kids did you have this year?
Uh, we had about a little over twenty in each group, no school group, no high school.
We have forty-two, almost two a semester.
Yeah, we started off with a little higher numbers and kids move and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, we got over fifty recruited for next year, so.
And, and we have a legislative body that's going to be having heard some of this.
Right, yes, yes.
This is really exciting, we, uh, your program was, uh, being talked about around Olympia, and so they want to bring all of the education committee for the House and the Senate out to check out the Gritz farm, which I think is such a.
Hey, all right, that's more impressive than I was expecting.
Yeah. Very cool, we're just so proud.
It'll be neat, it'll get, it makes it clean at all of them.
This is Cara on the board, um, her son is in the program, he's a wonderful kid.
Yeah.
And he's really, he did a testimonial about what he's gotten out of the program, and a, a lot of the kids that returned today did a testimonial, just really sweet.
We had a short amount of time, several of them said, boy, I wish I had more time to kinda really put my words together, so we just took, uh, for a sample, we're gonna do another, every, at the end of the year, we always have them write, it takes some time really writing one out, so.
I, I can say thank you, because, you know, he's always liked school, he's always done, you know, decently at school and everything, but he's thoroughly enjoyed school since being.
That's good.
You know, I, I know it's a motivation for him, you know, so it's just, it changed him, and his activity level, honestly, he's a COVID baby, so, you know, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's changed him, so.
Yeah.
And I know you guys can probably tell.
Oh, yeah, 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 we play games every day, and yeah, he gets after it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so it's been a, it, he's a great kid, and just, we just have a really, really amazing high school group this year, so it's kinda fun to work with him, so.
We also have two amazing instructors that work out there with.
Yeah, the first ever senior in the program this year too. Honestly, I don't know that he would have graduated without us.
Yeah, he, he had a, he had a special plan to stay with us to get through, he's gonna graduate, so that was, wasn't, wasn't something he was planning on doing, so.
That's awesome.
And I, I, more personal, so that I, you know, it might, I think he's close with a lot of my mother, so, you know, we go do stuff, we're doing it with other Gritz students, and it's, when I'm listening to kids in the backseat, they're all talking about school, they're all talking about their assignments, they're all talking about, I mean, it's like, they don't talk about, I'm, I'm waiting for them to talk about, like, other stuff, and now they're talking about school all the time.
All right.
That's right, they're all great students.
They're serving the community on Friday night, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Deanne did a compilation of all the volunteer hours we've done, we've done with the groups, you know, different places we go help out and stuff like that.
I have a volunteer, I'm a patch, we have the kids come out, uh, we've got the tree planting with the Swallow Land Trust, Fry Farm up in Ashford, we went up there twice this year, actually three times, two times to work, one just to have preschoolers to take them up there. Um, Bethany and Luther Church, we went there twice, helped out the community garden, uh, Gypsy wagon, they generously donated coupons for Easter egg hunt, and because of the donation, we felt like we wanted to get back, and we did the landscaping. Halfway through, two hours into it, we were only halfway through, and we're like, we gotta go back, this just looks terrible, so we spent about four hours there, and then mostly recently, community day, and then we went to the preschools at Fry Farm for a tour, so. He's thinking, oh, and, and we do the community garden with middle school, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, yeah, but we're really excited about the break, especially in, in Neil and Todd coming out, like I said, I, those players. But, and it's been really good, I'm really excited about what we're gonna be able to do with this greenhouse.
Thank you.
I gotta take off my son's last band concert.
Oh, yeah. All right, so this really is the highlight, uh, we have the opportunity today to recognize a graduate in our school board, I think, and we're super, super excited about this, so I'd like to turn my over to this student.
So this is Ruby, Ruby Morgan, comes under your safety. So, um, for those of you in the audience that don't know, we have, uh, a program in our district called Eatonville New Beginnings, which we partnered with the organization called Graduation Alliance, and that program is, um, it's really a dropout re-engagement program, so for students to get significantly behind on credits, they have an opportunity to get re-engaged and earn their diploma. But the state does allow a small percentage of students to enter into that program that are not significantly credit deficient, and Ruby's one of those students, so she recognized a couple of years ago that she really needed an alternative program, she just had a lot of, um, a lot of priorities that she was trying to juggle, and so she made the choice to go into that program. She was, uh, you know, she was a great student, she was here at the high school, but she just needed something different, and so she, uh, enrolled in the Graduation Alliance program in New Beginnings, and she has been working and doing school and just doing all the things all on her own for the last couple of years, and so she actually is a class of twenty twenty-five graduate, so she's graduating on time, um, and has big plans ahead for her, talking about real estate, and she's currently making lots of coffee and doing lots of things, so, yeah, so we're very proud of her, and I'm glad to recognize her tonight.
Awesome, so if the board, we're gonna give her the graduation experience, so we're gonna go over there and you get to shake everybody's hand. Would you like to give her, would you like to be the end of the line, if you're the end of the line, please?
Okay, all right, so.
You stay here, we'll have her start over there.
Yeah, I'm walking the camera.
Yeah, so we would like to congratulate Ruby for this really outstanding effort, thank you so much, we're so excited and honored to have this opportunity to be with you today, so, all right, we're gonna, go ahead. Thank you. Uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So.
Thank you, everybody.
That's all right. I don't know if you're aware of this, but Ruby's third generation Eatonville graduate.
All right. Congratulations, that taught us a lot, and we all graduated.
We should get, yeah, we should get a picture of the three generations.
Yeah, let's do it.
Oh, perfect.
Do you wanna get a picture of the three generations from?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna come from the door, I'm standing here in the door. Come this way, and then turn around that way, and that way, we can back drop the door.
Yeah. We'll stand on the side. Can you guys be like, I'm asking. Oh, like, let's go. Sorry, I'm. Took it a lot, so that if anybody.
All right, thank you for saying that.
That's a lot hard, there's a lot of hard things about being on the school board, but that is. Thank you for letting us be a part of that. Okay, uh, another great thing, we've been waiting for a long time to hear from the EHS chess team, thank you so much for being here. Put back the gear and everything.
Where's your chess board?
Yeah. You know what, the, the community can't see it, maybe over here, maybe this way.
Okay.
See, so you can see yourself on the screen.
Yeah.
We want everybody to see yourself on the screen.
We want people in YouTube land to be able to see us.
Uh, so my name's Ms., uh, Matt, Matt Huberance, this is my, uh, our chess team we've got, so I'm the advisor, and I'm just gonna have them really quick introduce themselves and in what role they play.
Uh, I am Hans, I am the president of the chess club, and I'm also a varsity player.
I'm Titus, I'm a treasurer and varsity player.
Uh, I'm Corey Dempsey, and I'm a varsity player.
So we've had a, a really fun couple of years that we've started this, uh, club, it was student-created, um, by Brendan Olson, and then it's been student-run since then, the only thing I really do is, is organize and give a board. So, um, our president, uh, Hans Amon, works very hard, comes in every day, um, trying to create opportunities for chess for the students at the high school, and also at the middle school, we have some middle school players come up, and they play with us. Um, it's been a really, really fun, uh, season this year, um, we got to do some really amazing things, and we have a lot of people to thank for that. Um, the first group that I really like to thank is, um, Ms. Tournament, and obviously the school board and everyone who, uh, supports us. I constantly am in contact with other schools about their chess clubs and how they organize things, and, and I really feel like we have it the best here at Eatonville, we have a lot of support. Um, when I talk to other schools about trying to get building use and buzz, buses and transportation, it's always a nightmare for them, but we've never had an obstacle in our way, um, we've always been supported, and we feel very grateful for that. Also, um, Mario Rigazzo was, um, responsible for donating, uh, and making these, all of these for us, so we got to wear these at state, it's awesome. Um, yeah, it's been a great season, we, uh, finished thirty-four out of forty-eight in state, and this is our third year at state, which is fantastic, um, we've also been asked to host the regional next year, um, for the second time in three years, so.
Snowed out the first time.
Uh?
Got snowed out the first time.
Oh, it got snowed out the first time, well, we, we didn't shy away from the challenge, we were pretty scheduled, which I see is something that we're really good at, is rescheduling. We do that a lot, yeah.
It's part of the chess.
Right, right, right. We've got plans on its term, and, and we're gonna make it happen, so. Um, it's been really great, these, these kids work hard, um, they spend a lot of time after school making things happen, um, doing fundraisers and reaching out to the community and getting people involved, uh, so it really adds off to these things, so.
I might add, I learned a new move when I went to visit them, I, who else went with me? What did you went with me, and what I learned, what I moved, learned really quickly was the move of, uh, when I was invited to play, just to get out of there as fast as I could. You remember that? I said, look, they came really fast, but, but no, it was just amazing to watch the interaction, the camaraderie, the teamwork, the challenging, people with each other to new heights, um, it was, it was really, it, it's obvious, you know, you're just gonna get better and better and go higher and higher, and so thanks, thanks for what you do, uh, to represent the high school and the school district and just youth in general.
Thank you. And you guys beat my best friend's kid from Sandy, Oscar Larson, and, uh, he's very, he's very shocked that students from the trees beat the game, so, and I said, well, we're just bad. Yeah, no, it's awesome.
And, and we're getting better every time, uh, Titus Lo, uh, was our most improved player of the year, he, uh, elo is your state ranking, and each time you play a game, you gain ranking or lose, depending on, you win or lose a match, but he, uh, gained a hundred and twenty-three elo, if I remember correctly, which is pretty impressive. Also, another person I forgot to thank, sorry, uh, was, uh, his dad, Peter Lo, who, uh, went with us and chaperoned on a state trip, and also wrote an article in the Dispatch, um, for us, and was very, I haven't been to do that.
So I have a question, um, Mr. Brower asked us if you would, would you came to visit the chess club, uh, could you tell us what your favorite chess piece is and why?
Uh, I would be C seven pawn, because that's the one I use a lot. I would be the. Q one knight, because it's underestimated until it doesn't.
Until it isn't. That's great.
I'm kind of simple with the decision, but Q is the most important piece.
I like that, yes. Oh, yeah, I don't have to go with the, any, any other knights, so. Of course.
They can chat in answer, right, and then visit you, then it's just like quick, I was forgetting reasons I didn't expect, so, it shows that you've really stayed it all out.
Well, I, we are so grateful and honored and proud of the fact that this is student-driven, thank you so much for stepping up, because we know you couldn't have a student club without, uh, a teacher that was willing to step up and be a part, so thank you so much for your generosity, and what I love is the contrast, we saw our Gritz kids, and we see our chess club kids, and they, you know, all together recruiters, and we do great things here in Eatonville, so just thank you so much for being around.
Thank you.
We need a picture, so. We're gonna do this. Can you guys come behind us?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Easier than probably, we'll stand behind our chairs. Oh, look at this, he's really smart, we sit, we stand. Look at this, youth leadership, that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the IQ just went up.
Yeah. Just black.
Yeah. All right, speaking of knowledge, we are now going to hear from the just knowledgeable. Oh.
Not surprised. This is not at all surprised.
Uh, my name is Kirsten Anderson, I co-coach the knowledge ball team with Alex Christensen, who, uh, can't be doing this evening, um, we have, um, state now, second year in a row, and, um, unfortunately, our seniors could not be with us this evening, but, uh, we have our president, our, our captain, our team, and one of our prime supporters here, as we've been introduced, introduced him. Uh, Titus Sherwood, the board, um, our place this year.
Six.
Uh.
Forty.
It was forty-two teams, and we placed in the top ten, so. So, um, last year, we did not make it to the top ten, so we, um, have jumped, and we keep jumping up higher and higher each year. Um, we also thank the school board for supporting us in our state endeavors and our transportation, uh, during the school year, we compete every Thursday in our peak season, we go to other schools that are definitely, uh, larger and smaller, we compete with Big Harbor, Bellarmine, and, uh, some of the other, oh.
Sammy.
Sammy, uh, Sammy, that was an exciting one, um, so, and last year, we got to go to Stadium High School, and they gave us two or five little bits of dummies at the school setup, um, we get opportunities to, um, engage with other schools, even though they're not necessarily in our, our leagues, but to get to have those, those really good competitions. So, I know that we often share space with, uh, chess, but we, uh, stand our ground too. So this year, you know, losing our seniors, but we're gaining a lot of the cross-country team. So, we will be, um, cross-country slash knowledge. So we will be, um, cross-country slash knowledge ball competition.
You'll have great endurance.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So thank you very much for your continued support.
Thank you.
Could you each tell us your favorite part of the college?
Please. The look when you answer questions, I don't be excited.
The jaw, that's the.
It's not just about knowledge, but it's also about being able to know it quickly and quicker than a people.
Is there a secret to the response time?
Yes, there's a lot of strategy that we go into to make sure that like, the students have to hit a buzzer and then they will collaborate, um, as a team and then our captain can either answer the question or divert to another player.
Be careful, this is being recorded.
I know. We're not gonna talk about it.
Share strategies.
It's great.
Well, you're, anybody else have anything to say?
We're just so proud and honored again. Thank you so much. Like, this is such a great evening and we have the opportunity to recognize you and thanks for, um, being great representatives and discussing this.
Yeah, we need to have come back, come back around.
All right. Ready? Lots of smiles. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want you to know that you are free to go. You don't have to stay for the remainder of the evening. Thank you for being. All right, we have another, um, great community member that we get to honor, uh, Shannon Collins. It's been such a great help and support.
Yes.
You want us to sit on up?
Yeah, there she is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you. Come up here.
You do, come here, come up here, my husband.
Okay.
Oh. You're gonna need to play it.
Yeah. It's true. I'm just a doer.
I'm just a doer. I'm just a doer. You know, spirit award, so we've won, we've won that same award now two years in a row, so. And now I'm like getting kinda competitive that we need to try to win another award next year.
The F four has been, loves me.
Sounds like a list.
Try to other.
Thank you, this.
Yep.
Yes, so.
Well, and I would say, um, for those in the room who have not been, had the opportunity of walk with the Daffodil float, it's something you can't fake. Like some things you can put words out there and you can polish it, you can do things, but it's not that way with the float. It is done one, one planning piece at a time. It's the, and last year, uh, Shannon, um, immediately started to think about how to do this year and she started to, you know, uh, develop that concept. And then when the theme came out, then she, each year there's a theme that's released at a certain time and not sooner or later across the board. And she immediately started to go to work on that and, um, it's a hard thing if we don't have a Daffodil float, we don't have Daffodil Princess, there's no scholarships associated. You cannot have any other school work, uh, school groups be associated with the Daffodil Parade and so it really is kinda like the capstone to it all. And, um, so I just wanted to present, uh, the certificate of appreciation to you and I'll read it. In grateful recognition of your creativity, dedication and generous volunteer efforts in designing the parade float for the twenty twenty-five Daffodil Parade. Your hard work and artistic vision, uh, helped bring the community spirit to life and make this year's celebration truly, truly memorable. So we'd like to present this to you and then, and then I want to. Thank you, I know this.
He, he's really the one. He's the one.
I'd say he should have a certificate.
Yeah, I was like, are you come up with the idea?
I'm no pro fighter, I like it better.
Okay.
He has, he has very much for that question. Probably gonna wanna contribute.
Yes.
He can hold that.
Yeah.
Well, I wanna up close, so I'm gonna leave this right here, but then afterwards, if you need to enter your certificate.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah. Yeah.
You like to document all the things. Big smiles, everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I built the, the museum you got here in town, but on small scale.
Oh, it's not too late.
Yeah, I, do you have a picture of that thing, right?
What, what are we talking about?
That float, we did.
The, the first one?
Yeah, it was the museum you got, the old hundred years old.
We have, we have pictures, it's right there.
No, it's right there, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's right there.
So, I don't, nothing you, you show them, people what you did, so.
Oh, I can.
That's your own museum you got here, so we made it.
Yeah, man, yeah, that was the cabin, yeah, all right, yeah, that's so great.
Oh, man, yeah.
The cabin, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yes. My poor husband, thank you so much. That's a compliment, come here, or I should say my husband did, so I completely understand how much I've done.
Thank you, love.
This one, that's like.
Oh, and I think we get the, the flame from you though. I think they give us the thing for the float.
But I find it so neat and something different.
That, that, there's, that's it, right? They give us that, the stuff for the float, right?
What are we talking about?
The little burgers, the little burgers, yeah. They used to do it.
We, yeah, we did it, but then also Ruby's family took it on for a couple of years, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, you, you've had, I've been seeing, seeing out there.
Yeah. And then Sarah, Sarah Cole, Sarah Cole.
Sarah Cole, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, for five years.
Yeah.
But.
One year.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of.
It is, it is, it is. So especially when sometimes we have to find some very random weird thing that we're looking for and it's kinda hard to find it and have to run around to search stories.
Or credit state of wealth, yeah. Yes, yes.
The people look at you like, what do you mean?
Why, why do you mean that?
Yeah, yeah, so, but no, it's, it's fun, but really he's, he's the one right here, yeah.
What did you do with the museum? Where is it now? Is it in your yard?
I transformed it to, uh, playhouse for my daughter.
Oh, right, literally, he like took it off the trailer with our tractor and he completely finished it and it has a floor and
Oh, right.
I love it.
Took it off the trailer with our tractor. And he completely finished it and it has a floor and
Oh, my goodness.
a real door, cause this door was, um, it looked real, but it was imitation.
Wonderful.
Now it's a real door and he has it and so little, so I have three children, so the middle schooler and the little one that's five, they do summer parties.
Oh.
Yeah, it, it's adorable. It's literally like the playhouse on a bike. So that was his idea to.
No. Wow.
It's crazy.
Like he's not lazy. That's great.
It's just weird. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Well, again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Close out with this really pretty background.
Oh, okay.
Try, try to get a five-year commitment out of him.
Do something with the contract.
All right, so we're gonna go to student, uh, rep comments. Well, Pierce College students just finished midterms, which was really, really fun, very draining. And they're now looking forward to finals and end of school year, which I think all of them should be done on June seventeenth, so right around Eatonville's last day. Um, and then Pierce County Skill Center's registration for summer just opened up and Pierce College also opened up for their summer registration as well. Um, Pierce County Skill Center is gonna have two sessions this summer. One's gonna be June twenty-third to July eleventh. And then the second session is gonna be July fourteenth, July thirty-first, and the times and days for those are seven forty-five to two forty-five. Um, and I think transportation is provided, they said that in their newsletter. And then Pierce College Summer Class is also just opened and for registration is now open until mid-June, which is also pretty exciting. Is that it?
Uh, yeah, Bailey was supposed to be here, but I didn't get her copy of the thing, so I don't know what she was gonna say.
Uh, again, if you need to go, we understand.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's something for.
I, I can send.
You're, you're, you're okay to stay, okay, sorry.
Good deal. All right, um, I would consider motion to approve the consent agenda, or are there any changes or additions to the content agenda? Then I would approve the consent agenda, so. They've done seconded, all in favor? Hearings of individuals and groups and we have, uh, Mr. Cheesey.
Hopefully my voice holds out, I'm getting over the last bits of the cold shit. Good evening, members of the school board and superintendent. As the school year winds down, I want to thank you and congratulate you on everything that's been accomplished this year. The progress has been meaningful and I've been personally grateful to contribute in my small way. And I look forward to seeing the momentum carry into next year. I'm confident we'll see the impact in the upcoming test scores. That said, we still have farther to go. The improvements to the high cap program are a strong step forward, but we need to keep investing in curriculum that stretches students' creativity and academic boundaries. Paired with more rigorous and engaging honors programs, we can address a concern many parent, parents hear far too often, I'm bored at school. Let's turn the boredom into curiosity and continue keeping students challenged and inspired. Our AI initiatives have shown real promise. Let's continue building on that momentum. These tools can unlock new ways for students to explore, learn and prepare for rapidly changing worlds. Another bright spot this year has been our focus on civility and anti-bullying. It's clear students are beginning to take greater ownership of their school communities and that shift is meaningful. My daughter recently led a discussion with the younger students about leadership and the interest and engagement from those students was incredibly encouraging. But it highlighted a clear gap. Those students are coming in ready and eager to lead well before eighth grade, yet the structured opportunities are limited or non-existent. We need to grow our leadership programs. The eighth grade leadership program is a fantastic foundation. Seventh grade being partial is not enough. We need to expand these efforts into year-long options for sixth and seventh graders and have an unbroken chain through from fifth into high school. The kindness game is a great entry point, but we should be building a full and consistent leadership track that starts earlier and supports these students throughout middle school. If we expect the students to lead, we need to give them the space, structure and encouragement to grow into these roles. And this is critical. I want to acknowledge and support the district's focus on helping underachieving students. That work is vital. The focus around getting students in the classroom, that is important, but we can't let that focus, let us lose sight of students at the other end of the spectrum. Those who are thriving and need new challenges to stay engaged. Supporting all learners means meeting them where they are and helping each of them to grow to their full potential. Thank you for your time and for your continued dedication to our students.
Um, we are on to reports and presentations. We'll do our enrollment and budget status. Okay, so I'll just give you a high level overview of enrollment, where we're at as of May compared to budget, um, and a little bit comparison to last year. Um, in basic education, not including, so not including ALE, we are down about ten students from budget. Um, and down about, let's see. Down about ten students from twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, ALE is only slightly below budget, um, and, let's see. And then compared to budget, our running start and open door is pretty much almost spot on. Um, TK and CTE is pretty well spot on. Um, SED is in, ahead by about three point four students, um, compared to budget. And then bilingual is ahead by two point eight students compared to budget. That's where we are. Any questions on enrollment? Um, so we have one more month left to count, um, towards our annual average and how the budget is generated for the year. Um, budget status, let me go to my notes here. Um, so our revenues are slightly ahead of projections, um, were due to, um, an increase in transportation funding, um, for an increased ridership, um, from last year. Um, and also an increase in SED enrollment, um, brings funding to, um, support those students. Um, expenditures are right on par where they should be by the time of the year. Um, I want to call attention to our cash flow document, um, that is this one here. Um, and since the state deportment doesn't come in twelve equal nice payments, um, we have to budget, we have to plan for that. Um, because we know there are certain months that our, our fund balance is gonna be lower than the rest of the months. So we need to be cognizant of that and that's why it's important to maintain that minimum fund balance, um, for those months when our expenditures are a lot higher than our revenues. So just kinda watching that closely and how that's gonna impact us next year and how quickly we draw down our balance. Um, as far as overall fund balance this year, um, we were fortunate enough to have that increase in ridership, um, in, in SED enrollment, um, and those few things that have helped us to, um, possibly break even at the end of the school year, which would be, um, incredible considering we had budgeted to draw down about eight hundred thousand. Um, this puts us in a really good position, um, to be able to, um, endure any challenges we're gonna have next year. So it'll help, it'll help. Um, I am cautiously optimistic. Um. Let's see, okay, so that's it, uh, general plan. Any questions on that?
Um, we'll turn the camera to Gracie for title nine.
So in your packet are, uh, our Indian parent committees bylaws that we wrote together, well, they wrote and, uh, I put them together for them at our yearly meeting. And they're just for your review. That's part of the steps is to make sure you're aware, uh, that there is a committee and we're up to about twenty-six members, which is wonderfully, uh, we're very excited. Tomorrow night, um, we'll be having a blanket ceremony, a traditional blanket ceremony for our graduates, so that's at six o'clock. We're before at EMS. That's kind of where we have our meetings, that's our location, so we decided to stay there. Uh, we're very excited for that event and that is all planned by our parents, uh, in the coalition. So, um, the other document you have is just the budget for the year. And what they plan on spending, uh, the funds on, what the, what the committee decided to allocate their funding for, which is roughly approximately nineteen thousand dollars.
Does anybody have any questions for Gracie? Thank you so much. We're excited about. Um, legislative updates, just because we, I'm hoping we can get to the band concert. What I want to build off of what Kristin was talking about, our budget and being cautiously optimistic. The legislature did not do us any favors this year as far as funding. As a matter of fact, we lost in every category. So it's gonna be really important that we are thoughtful about the money that we are going to be spending next year because I'm not sure that we're going to be getting, um, what we had expected to be moving forward, so, um, I think that'll assume.
If I could just add to that, um, I am still waiting for this, for the calculator to come out for our revenues. Um, they're really late this year. I think because they've got some extra formulas built in.
Yes.
So they changed this, um, special education formulas. They removed the cap, which is great if you're not Eatonville.
We don't get anything from it, yeah.
And then they changed the multiplier, which could impact us in actually the opposite way. Um, and we could see a reduction in funding and I won't know that until we actually put the numbers in in the calculator. Um, so we could actually have been negatively impacted at Sammy Lake, um, from the changes.
This happens over and over and over. It seems like every time that the legislature says we're gonna come out and, and help schools. We're in that too small to be considered big and too big to get that additional special spending. So we're just, we come out on the bottom every single time. So frustrating, but we're gonna keep advocating, we're gonna keep hearing our story. All right, uh, new business, consider approval of EMS overnight trip at Camp Arnold. She's not here, but, uh, I think most of us have been involved with overnight programs. Uh, I do believe that they're, this is funded by outdoor education grants this year. I'm not sure that it'll be there next year. It's not, I think it was cut from the budget. Looks like they're going to Camp Arnold, which is exciting and, um, and lots of kids there. So this is really great. It tells a little bit about meals and all of the things that they'll be doing. So I would consider motion to approve.
Motion.
Great.
Sorry.
It's my, I'm gonna second it all in favor.
Hi.
All right, approval of comprehensive school counseling program and he said, welcome back. I knew you came last meeting and and it was not on the agenda, so thank you for being here.
I'm going to start, if that's okay?
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, um, first I just want to start by thanking our school counselors and social, social workers for taking this long journey. Uh, we started writing our comprehensive school counselor plan September, I think it's right off the bat. Um, and two times a month, we sit down and we're very focused on our agenda and, uh, write the, the plan altogether. And for those of you who don't know, in twenty twenty-one, uh, Senate Bill, uh, fifty thirty said that we have to start really aligning our counselors' roles and making sure that they're not just doing busy work or supervision from. and making sure that they're not just doing busy work or supervision from principals, those kind of things, or subbing some of those things that counselors are tending to do. And they asked that districts really look at the eighty-twenty, that counselors should be spending eighty percent of their time with students directly and twenty percent doing paperwork. And that the comprehensive school counselor plan should focus on things like social emotional wellbeing for our students, academic rigor, and career development. And we really worked hard to align our plan with our district's sit plan and our building plans as well. So Nisa is kind enough to come in and present this.
I brought a different co-star, though. I'm Nisa Parks. I'm one of the school social workers at that middle school. This is Demi. She's one of my daughters, and she's in our elementary. And a lover of cheesy puffs. So I just want to talk a little bit about our process. So we started actively writing the comprehensive school counseling program in September, but we started the process really three years ago. And so actually, as a group, that has been a little bit discouraging to have some start-stop and lack of momentum for something that we've really felt like was valuable and that we really needed to help align and set clear vision for our program and for council and social worker across the district. And so we were really grateful this year for Draci's leadership, for her consistency in supporting us in developing this plan. And she's right that we would show up and we could get right to business and they were productive. You know, PLC time every single time. And now we have this product that feels very representative of our team, of our school district, of our values. And in hindsight, I think that the timing actually worked out really well because if we had tried to do this three years ago, you know, the strategic plan wasn't completed yet. And so it felt like things kind of fell off to place in just the way that they should have been because we had the strategic plan and then we had the building sit plans. And even more so than aligning across counseling programs, we feel like we were able to align both this way and this way, which felt really good. And what I really liked about having Jana and I presenting together is Jana is a counselor by training and profession, and I am a school social worker. And I think that's one of the things that has continued to grow in Eatonville and that when I first got here and up until this year, I was the only school social worker and I was school counselors. And that was a part of our process, working with OSPI. We joined a specific rural and small district kind of consortium for support for CSCP and started that back three years ago. And it just, they talked about that Washington is unique in some areas of legislation where it's a mixed model. We have counselors and social workers filling the role of supporting the comprehensive school counseling program. And to me, that just means that it's richer and more diverse, more multidisciplinary team. And so when we get together and talk, it's almost not fifty-fifty. There's three social workers and four counselors. And the conversations and the perspectives and the collaboration is just very rich and covers a lot of different areas of expertise. And we have people new to the profession, you know, to Marion Baker, thirty-year veteran. So it's been a really valuable process. I wanted to talk about, and I think Draci mentioned that you guys had the plan and kind of were able to look at it. So the areas of focus that they gave us, OSPI gave, based on best practice from the ASCA model, the American School Counselors Association. And so that wasn't something that we chose, but we very much align with the vision set forth by the ASCA model and by the intent of legislation. The three areas, the three focus areas were academic success, social wellbeing, and career readiness. And I want to back up too because one of the things that I think helped motivate this work and the work of Washington School Counselors to lobby for legislation, and I feel like she's doing, oh, hi. It's like, what is she doing? So I'll sit right there. Okay, cool. So is that first with the development of SEL standards. And again, like Draci said, just kind of defining the role, that when we don't have legislation that defines the role, every district, every school in a lot of ways gets to use their support staff how, you know, like modified to fit your TV screen, like whatever it is that you need in that building. And this has allowed us to take a step back and look at a wider lens of what is the goal of our school district, how's our strategic plan, and how do we support that within our counseling program? And so the areas of focus were given to us, and then we selected our goals based on that and also based on our sit plan. And we were given an opportunity, and Draci gave us a lot of autonomy and a lot of voice in this. And she said, you guys want your goals, your individual school goals, to be the same or different. And I feel like you could have argued either way, but we were very consistent and we were unanimous in that we wanted our goals to be the same across the district. We felt like that there was no way that we were going to be able to get to the endpoint if we started out at a completely different spot. If our vision is always the same and we're all marching toward the same goal, then our strategies can be different because I feel like different, our school structures are different, our student needs are different depending on school population. And developmentally, our approach is going to have to be different to meetings. So as an example, elementary is going to have more of a focus on social emotional lessons. They do a lot of classroom lessons. They do a lot of different group counseling. And middle school is a little bit of both. You're straddling, you're changing so much developmentally in that high school. You're really focused on career readiness and graduation. But our goals remain the same, even if our strategies and our approaches and the development is look different. And I don't, let's see if I missed anything. I didn't want to talk too much about the rules because they're just very wordy and very numerical, I guess, in some ways. But can you have a seat, babe? Could be my co-star from right there. But what the plan does do is it outlines what Draci mentioned, the eighty-twenty. So the eighty percent is supposed to be eighty percent direct student contact. So not sitting in meetings, not doing master scheduling, not doing attendance, that we are working directly with students because we know that that is worth the practice. We know that research tells us. And so the plan that you have actually outlines a lot of the things that we're doing that are, that are direct contact for our students. And that was also very validating because one of the things that, you know, when you're in the work and you don't get a chance to step back and look at it, it's like, oh, my gosh, actually, look at all these things we were able to write down. Sometimes it can feel very discouraging when there's a lack of vision and a lack of focus. And so not only did it do that, but it helped us to feel, I think, some pride across the district and what our colleagues are doing too, because we actually knew it wasn't there. It was just like, oh, my gosh, you do that, and can we try that? And it's just been a really valuable process in sharing ideas, resource sharing. Like, we use that. Can we maybe duplicate that? Do you guys think? Because even as small as we are, there's not always the lateral collaboration. There's not a lot of transition. And so that's a goal of ours, to work better because we know that that's better for our students. So lots of really cool things on the tier-one supports and tier-two supports and tier-three. And the process for identifying student needs. So I did want to just point out one more thing about our process. Because.
It's not me, it's you.
Disrupted my. So is that because we started and had some like fits and starts and things, we really did have a very long individualized process. So OSPI and the ASCA model call out use of time trackers. And so we're very intentional about what are we doing with our time. And so each building, you know, we all have a little bit different identity, a little bit different culture. But by the time we came together, we knew where we were at individually. That was clear. We had three years to, or two years to reflect on it. It was like, okay, now bring it all together. And I think that that has just been really valuable and it has encouraged collaboration, not just in our team, but with administrators, because we're having to have hard conversations about like, you know, I just don't really think that this fits with our model. I just don't think that this is what the intention is of legislation. This isn't the role of a social worker or counselor. And the hard conversations result in good work. I think that is, that's what we're here for. When we talk about collaborative duties, you'll see, I don't count T H numbers. I apologize. I say like halfway through, halfway down.
Yeah.
The collaborative duties, we talk about conferencing regularly with administrators. And we also talk about program results and data. And oh, my gosh, if you guys, if we were in a PLC right now, the colleagues would be like, can you have the table? Like, can you stop talking about Panorama? Because it has been one of the most valuable tools for our program. I think really in a lot of areas in the district and in buildings. But as far as being able to measure data, to use SMARTboards, and to look at our students in a snapshot, because it was the first time we were doing consistently a social emotional screener across our district. So we knew where our students were at in those areas. And Darren mentioned the anti-bullying and civility committee. And last year, when we were talking about the SEL survey, the parents that were there were like, well, I want to know. I want to know how my child's doing in these areas. And I just think that that's something that we know it's the whole child, and we know that this is critical. And we have to be having conversations about it. If we leave that piece out, we're never going to be able to encompass the whole child and student success and challenges. So Panorama has been an amazing tool. It's given us an objective way to look at our students, not just teacher perspective that's like could be subjective, or it's not just, well, someone said, this parent said. It's like we are looking at actual data and we're comparing it at the beginning of the year, the end of the year. We have a goal next year of actually doing it three times a year, similar to how we do our other benchmarks. SEL screener is a really fast, ten-minute survey. But it informs our data and our interventions as counselors and social workers so that, you know, it's not just a shot in the dark, because sometimes it does still do that.
Do you present the Panorama data to parents?
Do we? Not as part of our next steps and ongoing. So Panorama has also been kind of a fits and starts for us. But we have goals next year of including that possibly as a part of our conferencing and progress reports. And that's again based on feedback from the community saying like, I want to know how my kids do in these areas. And so we have, we've mastered it individually. We know that we can speak the language. We know we can speak to the tool, and we can speak to the standards. And now we can go forth and share the community and be the experts in the area and say like, this is what we know and this is what we have. And there's help and support you and your family. Actually, to answer that too, Rhonda, we do use it as individual tools. So we would use it in like a student support conference to say like, hey, let's take a look at this. This is an area, yeah. So when we're looking at the whole child, we're going to look at the ABCs, active behavior and what?
Consequences.
No, not consequences. The ABCs of like, oh, attempt behavior and.
Yeah, that's a consequence.
It's similar to that. But that, yes, we're looking at their, how are they doing academically? Academically, how are they doing behaviorally, and how are they doing emotionally? Because we know that all contributes to their success. And I think that that covers it, unless there are any specific questions.
I would like to move forward to note that it's really exciting to see the strategic plan here. We see our district goals very well defined in all of your goals. And I keep the pillars of the strategic plan. We can see really how it has worked. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
I'm kind of glad that it took that extra time so that the outline could be there, but I can see.
Yeah, that's the hindsight that I referenced. It was like, you know, I don't know that it could have worked out any other way. And being in the profession that we're in, a lot of times we can feel really siloed. You know, there's one of us in the building, and for a long time, there was one of me in the district. And who are our counterparts? Who are we collaborating with? Who are our colleagues and network? And being able to have the foundation, have the framework to build upon made it, I think it was validating for our work to know that this is the strategic plan for the district and we fit it.
Excellent. I mean, when we're all moving in the same direction, we can get, our kids will need to be a lot faster, so.
Absolutely, yeah. We're not lost in the woods.
Absolutely, right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? So we need to actually have a motion to approve this comprehensive school counseling program. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
A motion?
It's been moved and seconded all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Spokane Virtual Academy Educational Cooperative Agreement.
I think Sally could probably speak a little bit more in depth about this, but this is basically an agreement between us and Spokane Public Schools to serve our ALB students in different, like, what kind of classes they're taking.
Well, we have a wide range of classes, both EMS and school program from one language to ELA. We talk about serving students who might be home-based kids, as well as kids on-site or other opportunities for learning.
Any other questions?
I know as a student, I've been to Spokane multiple times. I'm in it right now, which we mentioned. It's so rewarding. And it's also just so nice, you know, we really do like the regular school schedule. I like to come home and know that, you know, you're working on other things. Especially like, I've done that high score. I also work on, you know, like seventh class. Such a great resource for high scorers to be able to, you know, have higher expectations for themselves and, you know, get that reward.
Did you use it in middle school for Spanish as well?
I took one semester of Spanish for children before in my eighth-grade year, which I loved. So then I took it again.
That's what I thought, yeah.
All right, I would consider a motion to approve our cooperative agreement. Motion. Seconded all in favor. All right, approval of WISIPC interlocal agreement.
This WISIPC interlocal agreement is really setting the stage for the next, the next item on the agenda. It is an interlocal agreement to piggyback on WISIPC's contract to purchase interactive, sorry. TV panels, smart boards at a great price that's been bitted out publicly and evaluated.
That's what that is. All right. Consider a motion to approve.
No.
I would consider a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with WISIPC. Seconded and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, approval of interactive classroom smart board purchase.
Hi, I just wanted to give you some background of the new line interactive panel boards that we are moving forward with. This is a long journey, so we wanted to make sure you highlight and realize what a huge impact this is for your staff and your students in this district. We have been looking at updating some of our classroom technology. We've been looking at it for a while. In fact, having wireless projection capabilities has been on our technology plan for a very long time. We attempted it with the televisions, and unfortunately, due to limitations of the residential TVs, it did not pan out the way that we wanted it to. So starting in 2023, we actually reached out to districts outside of ourselves to survey to see what it is that they are using in their departments and in their district. Then we actually took members of our technology team to districts so that we could tour their technology and we could look at multiple panels. We actually looked at about twelve different panels, working alongside Olympia School District. They actually let us go into the classrooms and talk to those teachers about how having interactive panels affect their teaching practices. And so in 2023, we recognized that that was something that we needed to move forward and make happen as part of our school district. So we piloted three different interactive devices starting in 2022, 2023 school year. We piloted with eight different staff members, as well as we had been utilizing them in all of our professional development to see how it would work on our network and our systems. We then surveyed all of the staff to ask them specifically what their technology needs were, not asking just about the televisions and their satisfaction, but overall tech satisfaction. And we specifically asked how it impacts their academic achievement and whether or not they felt that their technology was impacting student learning so that we can align with our success plan. The results of the survey overwhelmingly skewed that there was technology issues that was impacting student learning. Location of the televisions, size of the televisions, and the televisions being residential, not working with our hardware and systems. So we have settled on the new line Q Pro seventy-five inch interactive board. While the cost is slightly higher than the TVs, over time, they are warranted for seven years. They are made with Gorilla Glass, so you can actually hit it with a baseball bat. I don't recommend it, but we did take turns punching it. If it does break, they are actually fully replacing them up to seven years. And it's about a two-week turnaround for the new board to come in because they come from a country. The other reason why this moving forward now is such a huge deal is that they are going to change the price due to tariffs. The company that we do go through can only guarantee the price as of right now until their stock is out. So this is a huge deal moving forward. These interactive boards are going to allow our students to have better access to technology and allow our teachers to finally be free from the desks and be able to be part of the lesson and bringing students up to be engaged with the lesson more than the technology allows them to. So that is what you've approved, and it's a huge move forward for Eatonville. So hopefully, a lot of excitement.
No, no, I'm just curious. Is Olympia, or anybody ordering? No, no, I'm just curious, um, is, is Olympia or anybody ordering at the same time?
So Olympia moved forward with the NIMIO boards. Ultimately, due to the student, the usability, um, we went forward with New Line. Um, New Line, because we already have the WISIPC partnership, was already offering us a bulk deal that um, was substantially cheaper than the other interactive boards. The other reason that New Line came up on top from NIMIO and um, the View Sonic Boards is that New Line has a back-end management that is free with the board for life. Whereas in these other companies, they give you the free back-end management for about three years and then it turns into $250 per board. So it would be a continued cost, whereas in, once we own the boards, we own the boards, um, and the program that runs the boards. These boards also allow us to communicate district-wide from the touch of a button, which is fantastic. So if we need to send out a lockdown, your front office can actually click the lockdown button. All of the boards will be able to say lockdown, um, and you'll be able to go to lockdown before you do an all-call announcement, which gives our students that little extra moment of safety. And so it's not just a board, it's capital, so it's a huge.
Chills, a lot too much.
No, it's not.
Um, are they, uh, have they been in business a while? Will they, do they go, you, I, you know, you know, we're pretty comfortable in business for six years.
So New Line is actually the number one seller of interactive boards. Um, they, yes, so New Line is the number one company. This is not the cheapest of the cheap, this is actually one of the solid brands. We just happen to have a great deal in it because of our Trafira partnership that we already have for our home books. So it was one of those things where you're already a customer, so be a customer again. So New Line also has one of the best warranties. They are the number one used interactive board company in the country, which is why we wanted to move fast on the limited stock that they had, because we knew it was gonna go pretty quickly.
And will teachers, I still remember in your room, the double screen thing was sort of powerful. Teachers be able to maintain or keep their TV till it dies to have double screens or not know that.
So we talked about whether or not we were going to get, we're going to remove the televisions just because they are starting to have issues. So we are seeing increased number of tickets on the televisions. Um, we're trying to eliminate much tech frustration in the classroom. So we will be surplusing some, um, we will be relocating others to spaces that we feel um, would benefit from a television. And so we will make sure that we handle those TVs responsibly. Um, but the big push for this is moving away from that hardline. And so if we continued with the TVs and the interactive boards, um, we would still be forced to continue our HMI cabling and the dock station. So we would be removing the televisions from the rooms. Um, we are going with a carting option, due to the cost of removing the learning walls would outweigh the benefit. Not to mention, teachers would riot over losing a learning wall. Uh, so that is why we are going with the carting option.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you have any questions? All right, I would consider a motion to approve the purchase of, not to exceed 143 units until we have a analysis. So uh, they're doing an analysis of how many boards we need. Um, and I'd like in a motion to approve to purchase no more than 143 units, maybe less.
We're, we're pretty close, but yeah.
I got a new spreadsheet for you. All right, so, all right, it's been moved. Seconded, all in favor? All right, approval of the 2526 school year inter-district agreement.
So this is an agreement with the public school districts in case we need to utilize uh, their services for special education student that we potentially may not be able to provide programming for. We currently are not utilizing this agreement. Um, but next year, you know, we don't, we don't know if students are going to move in, if support are needed. So it's important to have this in place, just in case. Um, I would see that if we have a student who is significantly caracere or very visually impaired, um, we may need to use this agreement.
You know, we used it.
Yes.
All right, I'd, I consider a motion to approve the inter-district agreement council district. Seconded, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of purchase to replace six windows at the high school.
Um, so this one is kind of unusual just because of the price. Um, this only covers six windows at the high school. Um, and it's, it's right around $20,000, so, so, worst of last, $9,319.6. Um, so I was, I asked, I didn't have a chance to talk to Brandon in depth about this um, today, but he said there's three or four windows um, on the upper floors at home hall and then one or two on the lower. Um, and he's not quite sure what, because I asked him what's going on with the damage, what's happening. And he's not entirely sure, um, but he thinks it might be some sudden damage causing this, he's not sure. So he's investigating and trying to put the pieces together and figure out why so many at once are doing this. Um, so.
It's also just that time, like windows only keep their energy for so long and it's been system that's like. It's just trying when things just start, okay, replacement.
Maybe just the beginning.
So.
Yeah.
Just to replace.
And less is expensive, right?
All right, aside, consider a motion to uh, approval of replacement of six windows. It's been moved and. Seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, approval of replacement purchase for CDW computers.
So this is kind of a fun one and I'm sure Travis will be able to speak, it's a little bit more than me. Um, for the CTE program. So I reached out to, uh, we had three quotes originally set up and then they sold out, so we had to get another quote. Um, and so we ended up recommending, they're recommending CDW. Um, it is a little bit more expensive than SHI, but it's got a bigger processing than I believe it is. I don't know what the difference is, but it's more powerful than the ones SHI offers. Um, and so I reached out to Travis Collins and Kelly and asked them to provide me just some bullet points on what this purchase would do for them. Um, and basically they're replacing 30 devices, um, so 30 for 30. The current devices are six years old. Um, and Collins would use this for engineering, computer science, cyber security and engineering. Um, these devices are required due to graphic cards and the current computers that they have cannot be upgraded to Windows 11. So, um, the newer version, this would be newer versions for the lab uh, with better graphic uh, capabilities and future-proofed software. Um, he said that they'll be used for a variety of projects and activities, including flight simulators, robot program, robot program coding and 3D modeling.
And their new uh, framework, they have cybersecurity coming.
Great. I don't think any of us are working on those 6G computers, so we understand how that works. All right, I consider a motion to approve the purchase of CT computers. Seconded, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, approval of donation agreement from Eaton Alliance Club, $6,400 for negative lunch balance. Since we just had negative lunch balance, $8,000 last meeting. So this is really a generous donation from the Alliance Club and is this from the casino night?
Yeah, so Shila Hammond um, donated herself to run around the district and collect goodies that could be auctioned off for this. Um, and they came here and we each pictured with them down in the cafeteria and accepted their, um, the $6,400 check, uh, which will be put to full use.
So great call for our very generous campaign. All right, all in, I would consider a motion to approve donation. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're almost there, guys. Approval of the EMS ASV Kindness Gang. Ruby, do you wanna share, do you know a little bit enough about the kindness gang? Could you share with us?
Yeah, well, I originally.
Give a whole contract of three.
Uh, I originally sat in on a couple meetings with this minus, which is the exact, um, for, it was originally called the Antipathy Insecurity Committee. And that was so thrilling, seeing, you know, the community come together and have such a strong passion, make a difference and noticing that there is a problem and having the support and having the willpower to actually make a difference. Um, and we originally transferred it to EMS and was trying to get students involved. As you know, it's not, it's really hard when there's just parents who are like, we need to start doing this and the students don't care about it. Um, but seeing this student-driven empowerment was so exciting. So the ASV at Eaton, uh, or at EMS actually started the Kindness Gang and they're taking back the word and wanting to make it their own. So they've started all new programs, um, I know with kindness tickets, which is very exciting. Um, where they give out little tickets, I had a couple a couple of years ago, I don't think I have them anymore. Uh, they give it out every time, another student sees another student, showing an act of kindness and they give out a little ticket, they'll have them sign it. The student on the back will write what they did and they keep these tickets and they put it in the lottery. And that, at every, you know, monthly assembly, they read these tickets and hopefully they're, hoping at the end of the year, they'll be able to read off every single student who got a kindness ticket. And we kind, have them come down, hopefully, we're hoping the entire school will be on the floor and no one will be left in the bleachers. Ensuring that every single student is able to at least do some, show some kind of kindness. We just seem to just come so far, so exciting and, um, it's awesome.
And at May Day, they had their own bracelets they were sharing and they were.
They had their sign.
They were, they're signing, they're, um, their community day, I'm sorry. And so they were part of the street fair, it was really, really fun.
They got sweatshirts.
Yeah, sweatshirts, they were still wearing too.
Graphic design and we had, you know, a big sign that they died for their kind.
Yeah, so fun. Uh, who, does anyone know who their counselor? But adultism already.
I'm reading it right now, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's great, that's awesome. This was mine.
Yeah, she, I think it started the whole thing.
Yeah.
She did it all the way for everybody.
That's wonderful. Uh, gratitude to her for stepping up for that. All right, I consider approval of EMS ASV Kindness Gang. Seconded, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, first reading of policy 2131. Uh, Dracy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
It's a pretty simple, uh, it's a pretty simple policy, just um, ensuring that there's an approval process for guest speakers in the classroom. And I think more importantly, if it's a Philly, uh, guest speaker, district-wide guest speaker, making sure that Mr. Brower is aware of that and has the ability to look into the speaker and approve or anything.
Uh, so this is a first reading. Uh, we can continue on and have it be a second reading, but if everybody feels comfortable with it, we can also pass, so. It's up to you. Okay, so I would consider a motion to approve, uh, in MS 2, policy 2131.
So moved.
Seconded, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we made it through, team, good job. We're on to superintendent comments.
Yeah, I know we're, we're uh, waiting with email, just wanted to mention that uh, when we go back to our strategic, strategic plan, the reason why the sustainability and like only uh, part of this forum, if you well, if you leaving was because on that strategic plan survey, 12,000, 1500 people want to buy one day another, that was one of the things that come out. So you're right, Alice the minus, she took forward and said, is this something that we might be able to, to do? And from that is born now, got Alliance Club, uh, uh, and just great things. So I wanted, I wanted to recognize Mr. Snezak and Mr. McCoy and, and really of course, the others who are part of that brought that forward. But it just goes to show when we all have that transparency, when we have those honest conversations, that some great things can come about if we are just vulnerable and willing to um, go where the data takes us.
Uh, just a couple other things, testing is uh, winding down. Just have some uh, some uh, you know, makeups to do and such. But uh, based on our RRA scores and um, and just the preliminary, you know, blush, first blush, uh, we're looking really good. And I know you mentioned that, Mr. Snezak, you're all here for remarks. And um, so we're just really pleased with all those who worked so hard to, uh, our staff and uh, and the school board and others who are directing that work, uh, to drive student achievement, um, you know, the best is yet to come, just getting started. But I did want to know that, um, the other thing I wanted to do was just mention that, um, this Friday, we are going to have two people be honored, uh, at the Pierce County Skill Center, at the WASA, which means Washington Association of School Administrators, uh, Region 111, uh, award ceremony. And I would like to call up, if I might, when, um, we have them both here. And uh, I could say some things, but honestly, we both have been leaving tonight. And so really, that just goes to show you that we got it right when we nominated you and we're accepting. So Darren, if you want to come up, you will be receiving a community leadership award, uh, Pierce County Skill Center this Friday. I'm trying to embarrass him a little bit more on that day, he may have a little bit more time. And then Ruby, also, would you please come up? She's been selected as a student for a student leadership award, also in Region 111. And then again, the amount of work that she's done and continues to do, the leadership. I remember I had my interview for this position, she was one of the first ones to stood up and started asking questions, you know, like, you know, how do you see leading our community, what about concentration, what about these things? And so it's been, it's been a really great, uh, trip, so. And again, we'll uh, see you on the ground, if I can collect this back on the. Darren, this is third time I see you this.
All right, anything else?
No, I don't have.
Uh, we're gonna go to, sorry.
It's all right.
Uh, we're gonna go to board comments and we'll start with Karen.
I just want to say thank you for, um, it was a wonderful evening, uh, getting to see the students, um, uh, just seeing the work that they're all doing in different classes of their life. Um, and I still can't get over, uh, students that have, um, been a part of their lives since elementary school and seeing how caring they are getting, um, and growing their, like, full beard, it's great. It's that was a forefront. Um, uh, Mr. Snezak, if you could, I would love to ask if you could email me your comments that you had tonight just so I can keep them in the forefront of my mind and not let them be lost in the reading tonight. I would, I would love that, if you have that even. Uh, uh, so, uh, you know, I mean, there's a big list of, uh, you know, people changing positions and resigning and, um, and, uh, hires and everything. And I just, I just want to say thank you to all our staff and that, I just, um, there's, there's that often one that I just don't love. So I just appreciate everything that our staff does and, uh, it's just awesome, so. Um, I'll, I'll leave it at that, just thank you, thank you. And I, thanks to our community, what an amazing community we have for just all the exercise that they do. Thank you.
Uh, just wanted to say again, thank you. Um, sorry for be losing you. Um, if you guys don't know, she's taking off and, um, the work that she's done with Sally on the scenes with the new laws for, for COVID and the things adding up, I know it's been mounting, it's a big loss and it's a big goal, so thank you. Super appreciate it, um, yeah, and that's really it, I just, thank you everyone.
I just want to say, I always enjoy the meetings when we have student participation, everybody looked upon our students. Graddle Lance is something that is really precious to me. See, that's just another avenue, what it is, have an opportunity to get the, of, of.
Thank you. Um, I agree, the Gritz program and Graddle Lance are two really outstanding programs for, for kids. So grateful for board, superintendent and district office and some parts of that work, uh, because if you didn't, those impactful programs would not exist for kids. The other thing, and Rick Christensen, Neil Kerr and Tom Bobelis, outstanding community members who just volunteered. We didn't even ask, they said we want to help. And uh, it's outstanding. And, and I think you, but you're still here, thank you for leaving the notes, so we can make sure we check them out. Um, and for the great connection you have with kids, it's amazing to me.
Thanks.
They love you and I can tell. This, the thing I noticed with the chess club and with the Knowledge Bolt is they both mentioned how they felt supported because we provided transportation. So I just want to note that our transportation folks, we just owe them so much and it really impacts our kids. Um, we can't, I just can't get over how grateful I am every day to not see, plus cancellation.
Yes.
That is something that's true. Oh, yeah, that's great. And we had the opportunity to go on the learning walk at Columbia Crest. And uh, what that, we had Paulette and I and Jay, Sally, Chris, you weren't there. Uh, there were other teachers that were there and principals from other elementary buildings. And we really had the opportunity to see how our magnetic iReady. And we really had the opportunity to see how our magnetic eye-ready program was being integrated and those teaching practices and professional development is being integrated into the classrooms. We also had the opportunity to sit down and look at the data and the improvement. Uh, and they gave us a rubric to kind of say, okay, this is what good teaching practices look like, this is what we've taught them. And when you go into the classroom, do you see these things, um, moving forward? And it was spectacular, it was so great to see all of that great work happening. And I know similar learning walks happened at Eatonville Elementary and the Warehouser and received same rave reviews. And so, uh, again, that pillar of academic success, thank you, Jay, for keeping that center focused um with your cabinet and the principals, all the way down the line, teachers. Um, thank you so much for all the great work. The, the community invested financially and their time that, uh, our strategic player that is paying off and we're going to keep it at the focus. Um, I think, other than the fact that the school's winding down and things are getting real and exciting, so thank you for all the great work that you're doing and for the great communities, we'll miss you. And Darren and Ruby, you both are well-deserving of the service award for your experience. Yeah, thanks, have it in today.
You're welcome.
Have a good luck. Thank you, all right. Is there anything that we've missed? All right, we're going to call this meeting to a close at eight twenty. I don't know, the van's still going, but we need to check out comments over there and then maybe. I also have some seats for you guys, the seat day.